This flag moving thing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twenty years. American flag's been in that corner.
There's something that's on the right side of the.
I don't know.
Room?
I have no clue.
Anyway.
Yeah, I was with you.
Alright, uh, is the agenda good? Annalisa?
Uh, except unless you wanna scratch the financial report we don't have any, other than looking over the paperwork of what we submitted. Um, there's nobody here to report on that.
Okay.
No, leave it on there.
Okay.
Alright, with that, I'd make a motion that we set the agenda.
Second. Okay, got a motion to move and, uh, set the agenda for the day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is Ben in person or is he on the phone?
Ben's on the phone, just dial his cell number.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know his cell by number, her by number.
Oh, you don't have it memorized? I thought you were saying you didn't have it.
No, I. No, I, I got it, I just don't have it. I had to find it on my phone.
Thanks, bud.
Hi, this is Ben.
Hi, Ben, how you doing?
Good, is that Ben?
Yeah, we've got the commission here.
Right, well, appreciate you guys letting me call in today. It's a really small matter and I, um, didn't wanna make the drive for something so small, but, um.
You come up on all these snowy, wintry days and then today you're staying home.
Right.
Anyway, yeah, we're glad to have you.
Well, uh, anyway, do you all have, um, this document in front of you that is called the agreement to terminate and revise interlocal agreements for the District One Mental Health Authority?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's a small little thing, uh, just one little loose end that, um, so a couple months ago, we, we reordered, um, uh, we, uh, re-formatted the Mental Health Authority. In that, we did it with an interlocal agreement. In that interlocal agreement, the counties, uh, Buckholder, Cash and Ridge agreed, number one, to, uh, create the new Mental Health Authority and two, to terminate the District One Mental Health Authority. The little loose end is that we just now need to formally terminate the District One Mental Health Authority. And that's what this little document just does, is it takes the agreement to terminate it and now it just terminates it. Uh, Buckholder, um, and Cash County, I'm told, have both this month signed it and, um, so we just, once we sign it, then, um, the last little loose end on that, reformatting of the Mental Health Authority is completed. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, it's pretty straightforward, it's probably a lot longer than the document that it needs to be, even though it's just one page. Uh, just one sentence would have done it. Uh, but here we're just formally terminating the oath, the oath in of the District One Mental Health Authority.
So we still go through Bear River Mental Health now?
Well, we're contracting with Bear River Mental Health, yes.
Yeah.
Bear River Mental Health is still the provider, but it's a contract, um, from the Health Department directly. So it, the, the contract comes through the Health Department versus coming directly from the county. Um, it was, it was a cleanup thing that we needed to do, so, um, with that, I'd make a motion that we, uh, sign the agreement and, uh, and cancel the, uh, what are we canceling?
District One Mental Health Authority.
The, the, the District One, yeah.
Yeah.
And forming the, in, 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 by forming the new, uh, authority under the, the Health Department.
Second. Okay. Motion to cancel the agreement with District One Mental Health. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, can I, uh, if Annalisa's there, can I ask her if she can email me a signed copy of this?
Yep.
Get it, the other county attorneys, so that they can go in their masterclass.
Absolutely, I'll get it over to you.
Okay. Alright, well, that's that. Um, while I'm on the phone with you three, is there anything else that I can do for the commission today?
Yes, there is. Um, what would you like for Christmas?
If I keep that, I'll lose it.
Hey, um, on our, on our, uh, sanitation, um, ordinance, um, we, we redid that about the, uh, we amended the ordinance to, on, on these, uh, homes that are for sale that do not have garbage cans yet. Um, and, um, so they would not be charged sanitation fees until they were actually presented a can. Um, we probably need to make that just a little more clear that, um, that the garbage can, when they receive the garbage can, that triggers, um, the billing process for them and not, um, when, um, they have an occupancy permit.
But do you have that filled up right in front of you? So we, we amended this back on June fourth.
Right.
And we find that.
It needs to be just a little more clear that, um, billing will start when service begins.
Bill, the only question I have is, like, a lot of them don't call us in when they want to set up an account 'cause they don't know they need to.
Right.
So how do we catch, if we're not doing it by the certificate of occupancy, how do we catch them when their house is done and?
Well, but somewhere along the line, they've gotta ask for a can.
Well, unless they're in like Sweetwater and they have dumpsters.
Okay.
You know, I mean, there's, it's really hard 'cause there's so many differences across the county of, you know, what their sanitation needs are, and so I don't know how we do it so that, it, 'cause, I mean, the occupancy thing has worked until we came up with this with Sion Homes where they weren't selling them. That's when it kinda fell apart, but it worked until then because, you know, you build a house, you're occupying it, you get sanitation. You know, and that's what some of them will call, well, I don't have a can. Well, you can have a can to use the dumpsters, but you get sanitation once your home is complete. It was Sion that kinda threw it a nail in that 'cause it just didn't work anymore for what they wanted. That's, the only thing that's hard is we get so many that don't even know they have to call in to set up sanitation. We're trying to get the title companies schooled on that to tell the people, you know, when things are sold or when they get it done to call and change names or get it set up, but I don't know if there's a way we can do it with their building permit that that's something that could be on there that says, okay, we'll give you your occupancy, but you need to get your sanitation set up as part of your occupancy. I don't, I don't know what the answer is for it. It's just.
Okay.
There's a lot of variables there.
I thought it was like Bill says when they ordered a can, but you brought up the point of using a dumpster.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of them don't even know they have, they, we still have people all the time call us and say, well, our homeowners pay that.
Yeah, so there's a lady who called last week and she has lived in her, I, I don't know if it's a house or where it is, for three years and because I went through all of the building permits, Tyler closed out on one. And so I set her up an account, but she's been using the dumpsters for the past three years without paying for it.
I don't, it's kind of a.
Well, you know, with, with the subdivisions that have dumpsters, that's, that's certainly something that's, one size apparently is not gonna work for everything, one, one.
So that was just one way we could kinda catch as many as we could is with the certificate of occupancy.
So, and when the certificate of occupancy is like, this year, when they have been coming in, like, I'll just text Lynn and tell them, okay, this place needs a garbage can, so that that way there's a garbage can and then there's no question whether services were being done or not.
But in that, in that situation though, um, so you get a certificate of occupancy, but the home isn't occupied. So Lynn takes a can, but there's nobody in the home. That was kinda what we ran into with Sion, so, uh, is there, I mean, certainly the certificate of occupancy ought to be the trigger point for both people. Both you and, and the, the people, you know, um.
I wonder if there can be, uh, some communication after the certificate of occupancy of, if you don't want a can and to be charged, you have to let them know, or you'll have a can there tomorrow and start be, being built. And if they call and say, we don't want a can 'cause nobody's living there, then.
Well, and that, and that's okay with a can, but how do we deal with those that are in the subdivisions that, um, are not gonna receive a can, um, but will, you know, have access to a dumpster?
Maybe we could allow them to pause service, but then automatically turns back on. So like Sion Homes could call up and say, we don't have anybody in here and we give like a six month or a one year, you know, they can pause it, but after that's up, it automatically starts billing again. They would have to keep calling and re-posing it, you know, but if nobody ever does that, then it automatically starts billing. It would catch anybody that never called up.
Yeah.
You know, you would have to request to not be billed every cycle or whatever. Kinda like an exception or something.
Well, yeah, 'cause we don't have a link with the recorder's office when they sell them, you know, we don't have a, it doesn't alert us that, oh, this one just sold, so.
Yeah.
We can get them a can now, you know, we just, and I don't know if that's something that's even possible to do, but.
Well, like Swan Creek, it works pretty good because they have their cans locked down with a code. That's probably what the other HOAs need to do to stop non-members from using the dump, you know, until they do that. Uh, and Sweetwater Ridge has cameras set up. They don't have a, they don't have a gate, but they watch on the cameras and they, you know, they don't have a lot of time, so they catch people.
That are trying to dump.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, it's, I don't know if it's something I wanna think about more, I don't know, it's just, it's kind of a hard answer, yes and no, you know.
Okay, so Ben, this wasn't that simple.
Sorry. Sorry to give you a puzzle, but.
So it sounds like we're talking about section four of the ordinance we just passed.
Correct.
Currently, we.
Right.
Each owner, each owner and occupant of land located in the county is liable for the payment of said charge. Liability for the fee begins when both, one, the county has issued a certificate of occupancy and two, the owner begins to receive trash collection services. So if I heard right, um, it sounds like that works well when someone's issued a can. But the concern is, I guess, if they live in a, in a place where they're not issued a can, but they have access to a dumpster, is that right?
Right, to make sure we pick them up, um, and, and I, yeah.
So there, so there are some, there are some communities where you don't have your own garbage can, you just have access to the neighborhood dumpster?
Right, the subdivision dumpster. So everybody in the subdivision, rather than everybody having a individual can, they go to a dumpster location.
Okay, so in that scenario, could you just interpret what we already have? So that from the one their fee begins, when they're issued certificate of occupancy and when the owner begins to receive trash collection services, since the dumpster is just there for them always, um, they just are immediately receiving trash collection services because of the access to the dumpster?
The, the thing that arose though is when a home is built and if it's, if it's an individual, it's, it's a different thing, but if it's a, a, a developer and he builds several homes, um, and they're not sold and they're not receiving, there's nobody in those homes. There's, there's no service being provided, um, no trash being, you know, I mean, that was what we were trying to get away from was to make sure that, that we were only billing for services that were provided. So if a home sits empty, and there's not gonna be many of those in, in subdivisions, well, I don't, I don't know. Let's try it the way it is for right now. Let's leave it the way it is for right now and, and try to make sure that anytime an occupancy permit is, uh, is issued, that those people, um, know that they have to either notify the county, um, that there is nobody occupying the home, or they'll be just automatically billed and see how that works. What do you think about that, Eugene?
So do you think if we get an occupancy, you want us to do kind of a form letter that just says, okay, we received your occupancy, so if you're in the home, you will get a sanitation account.
Yeah.
If you're not occupying for a while, we need to know that.
And I, you know, that's the thing, I mean, I, it's not, it's gonna be more of the exception, I think, of a, a home being built and not being, uh, at least occupied or sold or empty.
It's never been an issue till Sion built so many of those.
Right, right, and having them sit empty.
Yeah.
And I, you know, and I, I guess that ordinance covers that situation, but in, in the regular, the way we've been doing it, I think we probably, you know, that occupancy permit ought to trigger being built at that point in time.
Yeah.
And if they wanna, if they, you know, if there's an issue of, you know, maybe the form letter just basically says that this home is not occupied, contact, you know, our office. And then that way you would at least have something to follow up on. But the big thing you're, it's gonna be a deal with that is, is trying to track when that home sells and there's people in it, so.
Yeah.
So would that apply to like the short-term rentals where they're only there during the summer?
No, because the fact that, that they're, they're actually being occupied. Um, this, this would be, 'cause they're, we're providing service for those short-term rentals.
Okay.
Um, you know, whether they're in them or not, they're, they're generating garbage when they rent them, so this would be just a home that's for sale that has no, no, nobody in it whatsoever. I think. I don't know, let's, let's see how that works and if we need to modify that, um, you know, we will, but, um, we, yeah, let's just try it for, uh, the next few months and see how it works.
Okay.
Okay.
If, if you guys, if you ladies would be willing to work with that, so.
Okay.
And then maybe Kaia, um, when people come in and record homes, you might just, um, touch base with Eugene to make sure that she knows that a house has been sold now and, and, uh, like for the Sion Homes, if it changes names from Sion into a, a new, uh, homeowner, maybe you could just touch base with her so that she can follow up on that.
Well, I had four yesterday, so there you go.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, does that solve our problem?
Wait, I'll put it now.
Kinda, kinda.
Yeah, put a band-aid on it for me.
Okay, well, that's as good as it's gonna get today, thanks. Thanks, Ben.
Alright, anything else?
Yeah.
One more thing, Ben. Uh, we were working on updating the dog ordinance and I forgot where we got with that. Do you remember?
Let me pull it up real quick. Let's see, we amended the dog ordinance back in January of twenty twenty-four. August of twenty twenty-two, we amended that ordinance. Um, have we talked about it since then?
Uh, yeah, I can't, was it?
Just last month, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I can't remember.
We, we talked about it in our last commission meeting.
We were, we were trying to give the sheriff a little more teeth to do stuff. Do you remember? And not necessarily collect the dog. There's a bunch of things.
I don't, I don't believe that what you, I think.
We didn't, we, Ben wasn't, Ben wasn't on the call.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
It was with the sheriff, um, and, uh, so we, what we decided to do is maybe we would schedule a public hearing, um, and, um, for, and talk about some, uh, potential options for, for the dog ordinance. Um, and, uh, we was gonna follow back with the ordinance that we had in twenty twenty-two with, um, with Ben and, uh, and look and see what adjustments we could make to that to give more, uh, uh, some stiffer rules, I guess, some stiffer, uh, fines, um, to, uh, to be able to enforce, so. I guess what we need to do is get with, with Ben and the, and the sheriff again and, uh, and see how we wanna move forward with that. In, in order to change that ordinance, we would have to have a public hearing when we, Ben?
Yeah, uh, correct.
Okay.
I can, I can get with Dale to, uh, hear his concerns directly.
Okay.
Then.
We will, we will schedule a public hearing then maybe for our September meeting. Would that work for you?
Yeah, that would work for me.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll talk to Dale this week, get his concerns, and if I have any questions, I'll reach out to you three.
He, he does, he does have some concerns, so we'll, um, let's look at our present ordinance and, 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 um, I did, uh, some draft language for a public hearing, um, to modify it.
Okay.
Can I comment on that, Bill?
Yeah, go ahead, Randall.
So just add for the attorney's, uh, information, what we talked about was, uh, authorizing the sheriff to write a ticket for him for not, uh, adhering to the ordinance and then that would have a fine attached to it.
Okay. Did you hear that, Ben?
No, can you repeat that for me?
So, um, they talked about, uh, we had a discussion about attaching a fine to the non-compliance of the ordinance. In other words, if they, um, are not complying with the ordinance, um, there would be a ticket written and a fine issued for the non-compliance. And at this point in time, I think the ordinance probably needed to be, uh, tightened up and modified a little bit with the amount of the fine and, um, what, what would lead to that ticket, um, as far as, you know, a warning, um, a verbal warning and then, uh, you know, um, and then also the parameters of what, what would be included in that, that ordinance, uh, for a violation, whether it's, you know, a dog barking or an animal out all the time or whatever. Um, we probably need to review that ordinance and, and look and see if we can, um, tighten it up a little bit and give, also give some direction to the, to the Sheriff's Department for enforcement.
Okay. Sounds good, I'll, I'll talk to Dale and see what's on it.
Okay, is that, is that what we wanted to do, Randall?
Right, no, I understand that the second time the, the fine would go up and the third time it'd go up and it just keep increasing incrementally, uh, if they didn't adhere to it, you know, it's getting multiple calls.
Okay, we had that, we had that discussion. Will we do that, Ben, and see what you think about that?
Alright, sounds good.
Alright.
So Ben.
Yes.
One more thing. Our P and Z were approached, um, a month or so ago, uh, we have our conditions and policies that you only can split a lot once every five years. And we have a, a, uh, county resident that wants to, that has split his lot once, but now for finance purposes, he'd like to split it again to put less, so less property is on the mortgage. And the P and Z were good where it's, he's not re, gonna build, sell and build again, but we just wanna make sure we're, we're good, that we don't have, just don't open a door to get us into, into trouble with that.
So it was, I understood, right, is it one that the, that, uh, county is okay with allowing? We just want to make sure that we're not creating a precedent?
Yes.
Okay. I can certainly go through the development code and, and do some reading and get back to you. Um, who would be the point person to report back to on this?
Me.
Yeah, okay. Let me, uh, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. Let me do some reading and I'll just, uh, I'll just reach back out to you as soon as I can.
Okay.
Okay.
He assured us it wasn't going to be changed hands or, or built or anything. He just wanted less, less ground mortgaged with the home.
Okay, I have to, it's a single lot, division?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, let me read about it and, uh, get back to you soon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Ben, Ben, I found, I found my notes for the dog ordinance we discussed with Randall last week and I emailed them to you.
Oh, good. Hasn't come through yet. Your email's probably just rounding the corner in Evanston.
Yeah, it's going through Monty.
Yeah. Alright, I'll watch for that, John.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Ben.
Alright, nice talking to you guys. Have a great day.
Thanks, Ben.
Bye.
Yeah.
Okay, Brandon. Go on up. State your name and what you got going on.
Uh, Brandon Brown, Department Supervisor. And we're looking at the beds for the Swan Creek Road paving project. Three beds, these are the.
They're all the same apples to apples?
Pretty close, seven hundred and fifty feet, eighteen feet wide. And five inches compared to the floor.
Have you used any of these before? People.
Well, three H is, uh, Price Huffner. Now, Top Job.
Top Job did it around a while.
Top Job has done some work around there, we've never used them, um, Consolidated, paving is, um, the one that's, the company that's doing, uh, well, work in Woodruff and Lake Town and, and also, uh, uh, here in Randall. So they're, they're all, you know, they've all have a presence here in the county, um. So, um.
And I'm sorry, that's as loud as a people on that.
Okay.
Can you tell me where that property's really located, twenty nine fifteen north, I don't know where that's at.
That, that goes up the, to the spring, Little Spring.
Swan Creek?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, looks like the three bids, um, Top Job come in at forty one thousand. Two ninety nine. And, uh.
Forty two, two five five.
And now it's Consolidated.
Yep. Three H is fifty eight.
And three H is fifty eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Even, all right, and we're, we're doing, how many feet, Brandon?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty and, um,
Eighteen feet wide.
And it's eighteen feet wide, and then, um, so the, uh, it will just be paving, is that correct? It won't be, we won't have to, the, the rings will be added by the sewer district?
Yeah, sewer district.
And, uh, the valve extension by the city?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just for paving only?
This is for paving only, no prep work.
Okay. All right, well. Facts kinda speak for themselves, um, I, I don't know. Uh, you know, I, I've seen all three of these companies, their, their work and they all do good work, so I, you know, I, I, I think that their, the bids are pretty comparable, they're all bidding on the same thing, um. I, I, unfortunately, this is one of those situations of where, you know, we probably ought to go with the lowest bid if we feel like that that is, that, that's the best quality product, so. Do you have any recommendations, Brandon?
I don't, I've seen them all three, I feel the same way, it's.
Okay.
They'd all do a good job.
Um, timeframe, have, they, would they all be able to get it done in the next month?
They all said they would, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, by September fifteenth, I believe.
Okay, so by September fifteenth, so.
Can I see that one?
And that's, uh, that's the next month, I guess we're halfway, almost, we're getting, getting by.
Yeah, I would have liked to, uh, give the job to local company, but it's, uh, seventeen thousand more, so. With that being said, I'll make a motion that we, um, accept Top Job's bid, Top Job Asphalt's bid of forty one thousand two hundred ninety nine dollars for this, uh, road, twenty one fifty north.
Hey, I'll, uh, I'll second that with the same.
What was the answer?
About forty one thousand two hundred and ninety nine dollars.
Thanks.
Okay, got a motion?
That recommendation, I, I don't, I'm not gonna try to test or anything, I just, uh, I just wanted to let you know that by, my direct costs are forty three thousand. And so I would just recommend that you confirm the amount of tons they plan to bring in, just to make sure that you're getting to the depth, because I calculated three hundred and seventy tons required to get that four inch of asphalt back to depth, so I just, maybe you start with another part of the green.
Uh, that's good feedback, Reagan, I think, I think we could do that, we'll make sure, assuming that that's what they're doing, um, we would ex- accept their bid. Well, they said not to exceed three hundred and thirty three tons.
I, I'm here as well, I'm Sam with, uh, the estimator with Top Job. Um, so the, the three hundred and thirty three tons would be for, uh, for the final compacted added four inches of asphalt, um, which is sufficient according to this extent.
Well, I guess we'll try it out then, uh, assuming that this motion passes. Okay, got a motion to accept, uh, Top Job for this, forty one, two ninety nine, any other discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
What about your one bid for the, uh, road, the Trail Park Road?
Yeah, that was just to, to get an estimate.
What, what, what was that at?
It was, I can grab it real quick.
Just so I know in my head, is that the remil and laid out?
No, this is, this is an overlay, this is just to do, uh, three inch overlay of what's there.
Is that what they did on these roads out here?
Yep.
I was just trying to get a number to compare with the carbon crusher.
Ooh. Yikes.
Yeah, the carbon crusher was about, uh, two, almost three hundred thousand. So, and this was th- three inches of overlay?
No, this is four.
Four, this is four.
And it wraps all the way around to the other boulevard or whatever?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it would go over to, 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 to Parkway, so, City Lotterie Parkway.
Okay.
So that's something we probably oughta.
Guess we can have a number in our head.
Well, and, uh, we probably oughta have additional bids on that as well, that was a proposal put by Consolidated. So, uh, we need to probably, if we're gonna, if we feel like we wanna move forward with that project, we need to probably get to more additional bids on that, so.
Yeah. So to Reagan's point, though, um, how are we so different in the bids if the pavement itself costs that much? Do they do, can they get it cheaper than he's getting it, or what's, what's the difference?
Yeah.
I, I'm still here, I can address that if you'd like.
Okay.
Uh, we did have longstanding partnership with Killmore in the part of the asphalt in the LA area. Um, and so I believe we need to find a better price on our asphalt for time.
Okay.
I think it does show on there, their, their prices.
Cause it wasn't that far off on tonnage. Which that feedback was really good from Reagan. He said three, he said three hundred fifteen, they're three thirty three. But give these guys another chance with that route. Okay.
Can I make a comment, uh, for Austin?
Sure.
I've had bids to do, uh, my black top on my driveway, uh, from Top Job and Black Magic. And that's significantly, uh, different, I was wondering if you got a bid from Black Magic?
No, I've never heard of them.
They're out of the water.
I'm sure Brandon could add them to the list. They're cheaper, you said?
Oh, yeah, significantly, they're cheaper. Twenty, twenty five percent.
Same thing.
Okay.
I have their contact number, too, I can give it to you.
Yeah, if you wanna give that.
Sam, how quick would you be able to start this project? Okay, I need a two-week notice to get the number ready before you set down.
Sure, yes, yeah, we can work around here, but we're, we're out there, we get probably forty percent of our, our business up in there, so we're out there all the time.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else, Brandon?
No, that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
Randall?
I'm gonna keep these or?
Yeah, okay. I do want Annalisa to keep one.
I just want the one with. Annalisa has to have a copy, and then maybe I can grab this one, this one.
Yeah, I know.
State your name and what you got going.
All right, Randall, Randall Knight, um, Ridge County resident. Couple of things I wanna talk to you guys about this morning, and the first one's already been taken care of.
Okay.
Just glad I was here to, uh, hear that, uh, part of, uh, that discussion, uh, with the attorney. The second one was, uh, with the recorder IT issue, uh, recently, uh, over the last three years, um, the Swan Creek Village HOA Board has tried to upgrade the CCNRs. And, uh, so I called, uh, to try to get a copy of, um, that, cause I understood that it was recorded here at the county. And, uh, when I did that, I, I got a copy from the recorder's office and it come across the CCNR. And when I opened it, it was the bylaws and not the CCNRs. So I called to ask her why it was, uh, listed as, uh, CCNR and not the bylaws, and she said that's because of, uh, IT issue that, uh, that's the code they use, so I asked her to sit in with us so she can explain exactly what that is. Cause I think that if it's a bylaw that, uh, property owner is requesting a copy of it coming out across as the bylaws, and if it's the CCNRs, it come across as the CCNRs. Because that created a lot of issues, uh, because it come across as it was recorded and it hadn't passed. So it's very misleading when you get a, a text from your recorder's office stating CCNR's been recorded when in fact, no, it hasn't, and it's, when you open up the document, it's bylaws, not the CCNRs.
So in my recording program, I only have a set number of codes that I'm allowed to use, that was set up by Brian when he created our program with guidelines by the state. And that is the bylaws and the CCNRs fall under the state code, and so that, that's a state thing, that's not a me thing, it's not a Brian thing, when I send my documents to the state archives, that's what it is labeled under, and that's just what it is. So.
So when you got contention with your board like we do, and it comes across that way, cause when, when they send out the CCNR to be, uh, updated, to be changed, it comes across that it's already been passed and accepted. And that's, uh, going out to be, uh, voted on by the property owners, and we have five hundred and sixty property owners, I think, in Swan Creek Village. And they can't get sixty, uh, two-thirds of them to, to agree with their recommended changes.
So.
Like I said, this is guidelines set up by the state, this isn't a me thing.
So, as far as, um, your code, why, why, why couldn't it be bylaws and CCNRs?
Cause it falls under, it's an umbrella term for both, kinda like
Right.
Warrant T D versus special warrant T Ds.
Right, but if you, if you look up on.
Could you make them one file?
Yeah, is it, is it so that the CCNRs and the bylaws could be included in the same document?
If that's how they wanted to record it, I could, yeah. But if they bring them in separately, I cannot combine them.
Okay, so is the CCNRs recorded?
I'd have to go look, I'm just, uh, they've done a lot of CCNRs over the last couple of years. A lot of updates that way.
Well, they've done a lot of bylaws, but they've never been able to update the CCNRs since, uh, uh, oh eight, I think.
So, so just sorry, the CCNR is, that's the only one that the county has to record, right? The bylaws are internal.
I think the recent, uh, legislature change on HOAs, they have to record both of them now.
Okay, yeah, I just don't know enough about it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just learning about it too, uh, try, because of the issues that's going on with, uh, the board. Uh, we're trying to, all of us get educated on what the state law is, because they've changed the HOA laws, because there's been some, they, state's terminology was, uh, broke, H- HOA boards have created, uh, the legislature to get involved and to get a little bit more strict on how, uh, HOAs are, um, managed statewide.
Well, if they both gotta be recorded and they've gotta be, you only can use one code, um, a- a- again, couldn't they be combined into the same file if they were both recorded?
I don't know what the state requirement is, uh, seems like it could be, uh, but the problem is, is, uh, the bylaws can be changed annually without, uh,
Yeah.
property manager's, uh, input on that, but that's, CCNRs requires two-thirds of the property owners to agree to that change.
Well, I don't think, as far as that goes, I mean, I guess I'm, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but what I'm, what I'm looking at is, is if you want a copy of them, um, if they were combined into one file, you would get a copy of your CCNRs and it would say when yours was last, whatever.
Hmm.
And then if you amended your bylaws, they, that amendment would be just, um, you know, would be just re- re-recorded again and, and have an updated, uh, bylaws, uh, uh, you know, your bylaws would be up, uh, uh, updated, but it would be in the same file if you wanted to look at them again. Is that not possible to do, Kaya?
I, I can't, um, commit to anything like that, I don't know.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, is that not possible? I mean, why couldn't they be in the same file?
Is it a PDF?
Yeah, it is, but after something's been recorded illegally, I can't go back and change it or add anything to it, I think that's where we're gonna run into the problem, so even if they do amend their bylaws but not their CCNRs, I couldn't then go and edit that PDF.
Yeah, I don't think bylaws have to be recorded, I think if it, but CCNRs are, are pretty important, because if it's not recorded, they don't have to follow those rules. If it's not recorded at the county, then it's just, there's no, like if they say it's not, when I pulled it up, it's out there.
Yeah, it's like the plat.
Yeah.
You know, you record the plat and that plat has, you know, CCNRs with it, and those are the rules of the plat and the.
And whatever's posted is the rules, even if they're wrong.
And the bylaws are the way they run their, their organization.
Hmm.
Okay, um, well, I guess what we better do is, is maybe do a little more researching on this and, and bring our IT person in and see if he has a solution of how we can make sure that, uh, you know, that, uh, we, we have the CCNRs and the bylaws, whether they could be combined or not. And, and how we can legally do that and see if we actually even have to record the bylaws, I, I'm not sure how that works, but, um.
Well, the other thing too, and this is what I told Randall on the phone, the, the homeowners buying property in a certain subdivision should be doing their due diligence and looking for those, because all of our records are online, so if they don't, if they don't look for it, they don't find it, then that's on the property owner, in my opinion.
What are you referring to?
Like with the CCNRs.
Oh, okay.
But if we don't have them posted, is it our fault or their fault for not, you, you know what I'm saying, I'm, I get, I understand what you're saying, Kaya, it seems like there's a gap of information that we just need to fix. Seems like there's a gap of information that we just need to fix.
Cause I mean, I can only record if they bring me, so if I haven't gotten it, I can't record it.
Yeah.
But on the, on the buyer's side, they need to be doing their due diligence and actually opening up those documents, like, okay, this is just a bylaw, I don't, you know, I need to pay attention to it, that's not what I'm looking for, I'll go to the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd just be nice that if you called over to get a copy of the bylaws, it, it come to you as the bylaws, and if you wanted the CCNRs, it come to you as the CCNRs. That, that's all I'm, uh, trying to bring up is, the title of what you get should be what's included in the, what you receive. And not misleading, because the CCNRs are very sensitive to the, uh, property owners.
Did you finally track them down? Did you find them ever?
Well, oh yeah, I've got a copy of it, uh, it's two, two thousand and eight, but it said that it was done, it came across like it was just done two months ago, when they updated the, the bylaws. And no, I know it hasn't been done, and it wasn't done last year, but if I call up for the CCNRs for, uh, or the bylaws for twenty twenty-four, it comes across as the CCNRs was updated, not the bylaws.
So if you guys vote to change something in the CCNR, how, what's the process for getting that recorded?
Uh, once it's, uh, agreed to by the majority of the property owners, then it's accepted as it states in the document, then the board president or one of the other board members brings it over to her and says, record this. That's the way I understand it.
Which is true, but at that point you, and I'm not meaning to sound rude and professional here, but at that point, you should know what you've got coming into my office if the whole board has agreed upon it.
Well, and I agree with you.
They may have brought you some bylaws and it overwrote the CCNRs.
Yeah, yeah, that's, cause you know, she just, all she can go by is the, uh, uh, my, mine's gone blank, who is it that signs that, yeah, this person is who they say they are and?
Oh, the notary.
Yeah, the notary, all she can do is look at the notary and say, yeah, the notary, uh, verified that this person that's bringing this document, uh, is the correct person, and records it. She doesn't know if that document's true or not. Neither does the notary, they're just taking the person's word for it. That's the issue, I think, so.
Okay, well.
I appreciate, uh, her coming and sitting and explaining it to you, um, better than I could have, and we were on the same page, though I see that it's an IT issue, and it should be simple to correct it, in my opinion.
Well, I didn't know that CCNRs were, carried that much importance compared to bylaws, and that they're required, so.
Yeah, that's where are your laws, uh, that you have to abide by if you live in that HOA is recorded. And the dog, uh, ordinance is one of the issues.
Okay.
Okay, we good on that? Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks, Kai.
Thanks, Kai.
Okay, so the, uh, last thing on that is, I called, uh, John several times, uh, talked to him about, uh, different things. Says he'll call me back later, he doesn't, I, so I called and left a text with you, a voicemail. You didn't reply, so how do I get in touch with you guys? Uh, seems like you guys ought to have.
I thought it was just giving you trouble. I did, I have, if I missed a.
You must have missed it too, huh?
Sam's actually, Sam's a lot better than me at, at following up.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty.
He just comes to me at the post office, you know?
I try to, and you believe in it as I'm coming in, but it seems like you guys ought to have, uh, a phone number just for county commissioner stuff, so when you get it, you know, hey, this has to do with commissioner and not personal property buying cows or.
So, um, with me, and it's, I mean, it's my problem, not yours, I, I do better with text messaging, just because it allows me to respond at any given time, you know? If I have a minute here and there.
Yeah.
Um, that's probably gonna be the trick with me, not to say I won't talk to you on the phone, but I can vouch for Sam, that he's pretty good at following up, so if, if he didn't, if he didn't call you back, he didn't see it.
Yeah, well, so I'm wondering, how, how, how does, not just me, but I, I don't, I can't imagine I'm the only one.
You're the common denominator.
Well, that's cause I guess I'm the one that's, uh, like, uh, pit bull.
Yeah.
I hope I don't, uh, offend you guys, I'm just trying to.
No, I.
Good, uh, resident here and good.
It, eventually it'd probably be nice to have, just like a second.
Yeah, you guys could have a secretary or something like that, we could call into him, they could.
So we know who's calling for commission stuff, who's not.
Exactly, yeah.
Cause if you look at my phone, I'm one of those people that has, I'll tell you right now, I have two thousand eighty-one unread messages, because I have a sickness. And I have a four, a hundred forty-one thousand unread emails.
Yeah.
So it's just, uh, it gets lost.
Yeah.
It's a problem I have that I need to keep.
Yeah, so if I send you a text message, you're not gonna see it either.
I'll, I'll respond, I'll respond, yeah, might be a little bit later, but I'll get back.
Yeah, he will. I'm recommending maybe you guys check into trying to hire a part-time secretary or something, so somebody could call that number, and then they could distribute it. Uh, like, uh, Annalisa does with, um, agendas and stuff like that, but she's booked, she can't take care of your secretarial issues.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get her one more job. I, I am glad you came in today, because if we were to have discussed this over the phone, I would not have been much help to you. So, this is the perfect type of, type of thing to bring in, cause I didn't know that about CCNRs.
And I love coming to see you guys, and I gotta get me a big, uh, belt buckle, so I feel like.
So you gotta earn that.
Yeah, well, I can buy it, one that I earned, I earned the money by.
I won that one, so I probably wouldn't have it.
What was it for?
Uh, team roping.
Team roping?
Back in the day.
Steelers?
No, I was a header.
Header?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, we good, guys?
We're good.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed that, alright, I don't know. Great, thanks for coming in, yeah, thanks. Yep.
I'll tell you, catch you, poor stuff.
Yeah, do that.
See ya.
Okay, Spencer. Is he still there? Okay.
Hey, John, would you mind talking as loud as you can? I have a little laptop that doesn't have a very good sound.
Hold on just a sec, see what.
Because.
There you go.
There we go, thank you, John.
That better?
Yeah.
Alright, hey guys, um, thanks for giving me some time today, um, so, my name's John, I'm the founder of Civic Review. Uh, Spencer was not able to make it today, and I'm filling in for him, um, but, uh, we, we were both on the last call with, uh, Annalisa. So, um, I was invited to tell you guys a little bit about our product, um, so you guys can have, have some context about it. Um, and then, um, and I'm not exactly sure what the next steps are from there. Annalisa, do you, did I say, pronounce your name right, by the way?
Yes, yes.
It was Annalisa.
Annalisa, yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, so you can just kinda tell me what's gonna happen next, but, um, to start off, uh, I just wanna tell you guys a little bit about Civic Review. Is there a way to share my screen? I, I have some diagrams, it'll speak a thousand words for me. You saw some of these the other day, I think so.
Yeah, you can share.
Perfect. Okay. Alright, so, um, just a little bit about, uh, Civic Review. Um, I founded Civic Review about eight years ago, I was a freelance web developer, and I was hired by, uh, Summit County to build some software for them to do licensing, um, within the county, and they were, they were getting applications and handing the paper application from one person to the next, and they needed to solve that problem, and they couldn't find any software that did it the way they wanted it to work, and so, they hired me to build that, I built the software. Um, they, or let's see, the health department asked for software for their food permits, and so I built very similar software, again, with some different features. And then a third time, somebody else asked me for permitting software, and it was almost, I felt like I was rewriting the same software over and over again. So, that's kinda my background, um, is, is, and how Civic Review came to be, on, on the third try, I decided, you know, maybe I'll just start a software company where we sell a subscription, that way I can maintain the software for everybody. Um, we're based in Logan. Um, and I'm gonna just use a few things, um, I wanna just tell you guys what we do. So Civic Review is permitting and licensing software, that's kinda the main, um, problem that we try to solve, is around permitting and licensing. But a lot of our customers, as I, as they use our software, they find that it's useful for all kinds of other things, um, like, um, well, I live in Nibley, I don't know how familiar you guys are with, um, Cache Valley, but, um, and Nibley's a customer, and pretty much everything on this screen is a Civic Review form, except for the registration for sports. So, um, they set up all their main planning and building permit forms in Civic Review, but then they also added all the plant, um, utility service agreement forms, um, that, including a connection and disconnection, special event permits, business licenses, dog licenses, uh, all kinds of things like that. So, if an applicant comes on and they need to fill out a form, they're just gonna go to the link that they need, like the building permit application form here. And then they go in, and then they can just start filling this form out. And, um, and what happens is that form gets filled out, and it comes in to the city, um, where they can take that form, and then they can run it through some kind of a workflow, and everything from the pre-approval to the final approval here, everything is customizable, and so, um, you can set it up so that, you know, with a, with a, uh, building permit, you would probably have some kind of a pre-approval where somebody is making sure that all the right plans were uploaded and everything, and then, um, then you can go through some kind of a collection of approvals. There was a little bit of talk, or I saw some line item, uh, agenda line item things today for some of your subdivisions or planning zoning projects, and those would also have pretty complex workflows happening here. Um, and so, a lot of our customers, they'll, they'll set up these forms in Civic Review. Um, and what they'll do is they'll end up, um, using it for all kinds of other stuff, so I wanna show you guys. Um, you guys work with Jake, uh, shoot, what's his last name?
Oh, you're.
You talking about Tyler?
Tyler, I mean, yeah, Tyler. Right?
Tyler, Tyler Siemens, is that what you're talking about?
Yep, Tyler, so Tyler uses Civic Review, um, through a couple of our mutual customers, but the main one I think that he has experience is with is South Weaver. So, um, South Weaver is using our software, um, for a bunch of things, um, Tyler, being a third-party contracted, um, inspector or plan reviewer, he, um, we were talking to him a little bit, and he was like, I really love your product, I don't have time to talk to people about it. Uh, but if you guys wanna tell them that, that I love you using it, you can go ahead and tell them, and I, and I think that's how, um, my colleague Spencer, who couldn't make it today, ended up getting in contact with you guys. Um, is he, uh, kinda found that out, and so he, um, if you guys wanna ask Tyler about his experience with Civic Review, um, to get a better idea on what he thinks about it, um, I invite you to do so, but in South Weaver, um, they have a, an account here, let's look here. They have a few different databases in Civic Review, they have one for building permitting, they have another one for business licensing, they have another one for code enforcement, land use, special events. And so, they've set up, um, in each of these areas, you know, here in the building permit area, we can see that, um, they can see how many they've received, and if city staff comes, it's a list of all the permits that have been submitted that are currently undergoing the approval process. And so, you can see here, um, like with this building permit, um, it was pre-approved, the building department or building official has approved it. Um, community development has approved it, and now it's just waiting on final approval. And so, in, in fact, if we go in and look at some of these, this is what it looks like, um, so this is a pool permit, and we have a list of fees that have been paid, they paid a deposit, it looks like, of a hundred dollars. Um, and if we go down here, we can see all the information that was submitted in this application form, uh, going through everything, so I'm gonna try to pick something that's not gonna have anything to, um, but you know, they're providing, oh, we have a pools, just they have, okay, ingrained pool, this is estimated value, who's building it, so on and so forth, and there's all kinds of other things there. Um, so in terms of counties, um, counties off, I've been talking about cities a lot, but we have a lot of counties using our software. Um, Cache County Clerk's Office is using us, um, Box Elder is using us all over the place, um, in their county. Um, and so, um, and, and you know, with Box Elder, they've, again, they've set up a building database, a clerk database, a fire department, planning, and then roads, and so they're doing things like encroachment permits through Civic Review, burn permits, um, just pretty much any situation where there's an application followed by some kind of a, a handling of that application on an individual basis, so, um, you know, we even have Perry City, they set up things like, uh, Fourth of July, five K fund run registration form, which I, I don't normally tell people to use Civic Review for like, event registrations like that, like attendees or whatever, but the numbers are small, and so they just set up a form, and people register and pay their fees for this five K, and they have this little five K that they do on the Fourth of July, so. Um, some of the, um, we do, I, I wanna highlight what's gonna maybe resonate with you guys, uh, more, instead of spend a bunch of time talking about things that maybe don't resonate so much, because time is pretty limited, and I wanna make sure the next item agenda has time, so. Um, some of the things that make us really different from other software out there is that, um, we, once applicants apply, they, they get a portal where they can log in, and they can see the status of their application, um, they can communicate with staff, um, through their portal. Um, some of the other thing is the plan review situation, so, um, there are a lot of laws, kind of recent, in the state of Utah around plan reviews, and how much time you get to, to run each one of these cycles. Um, and so we have a really good tool for tracking plan reviews. Um, we also have an inspection app that works offline, so whoever's doing inspections can take this app out into the field, um, and they can make notes and send a report, everything, and even if they don't have a connection, it'll just sync all of their notes up after they get back to the office or back within a signal. And so, we have a, a cool inspection app, and then we also do, we automate a lot of the renewal work, so renewals is kind of a pain to deal with when it's time to do renewals, even if the numbers are small, um, and we automate a lot of that away, so that, um, reduces a lot of workload there. Um, and, and the main thing, probably the biggest differentiator between us and other permitting and licensing software out there is that we don't do, we don't do the modules, so um, the problem with modules is, you look at a software company, and you're like, hey, we wanna, we wanna find something for building permit, and they say, okay, great, here's the price. You might sign up, and then maybe a year or two later, you're like, hey, what if we wanna do, what if we wanna set up a form for like, uh, a backflow preventer, uh, or cross-connection approval or something, and, um, and they say, well, that doesn't really fit in our business or our building permit module, you have to buy this other module. And before you know it, um, you're buying all these modules, and it's just not worth it if you only have ten or twenty, um, submissions per module, you know what I mean? And in Civic Review, we don't look at things as modules, everything, every form just has its own, we call it a permit type. And so you can set up any kind of form, and set up any kind of workflow after that, and we don't really charge based on number of forms or anything, so. Of some of these things that I mentioned that, that makes us kinda unique or different, um, is there anything that you guys particularly would, would like to check out, and I could show you? Um, anything within Civic Review?
Um, I, uh, so, can you accept payments through Civic Review, like with Stripe or PayPal or some other type of API?
Yeah, we integrate with Stripe, and we, you can take payments through Stripe, so, yeah.
Okay. Can you accept most people that, most, uh, companies that have some type of API or, um?
Do you have, do you have one in mind that you're wondering about?
Core is who we use for payments.
We use Core, we're not tied to them, but a company called Core, and I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, Core.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we integrate, we did integrate with Core.
Okay.
Also, so, yeah, so if you guys already have that, uh, we can just hook up. So, yeah, so if you guys already have that, uh, we can just hook up the integration, you'll be good to go. But if you don't wanna use that and you wanna use something else, that's okay by us too.
Okay.
Great question. Any other questions or?
So with this work.
Did I touch on any challenges you guys are having as a county?
I was thinking about short-term rental, if this would be something we could use for short-term rental applications.
Our, our treasurer's asking if, if this could be used for short-term rentals.
Yeah, we have a lot of customers using Civic Review for short-term rentals. So people can apply online to register their short-term rental and then each year they get a renewal notification, kinda like what I was looking at here. So Civic Review will automatically know when it's time for them to renew and just start sending emails to them saying, hey, you gotta renew, you gotta renew. And because of this automation here, it cuts down on a lot of that work. This number, this ninety-five percent of renewal work is done for you. This is, I went back to Summit County at one time and I was like, how many, um, how many licenses are you having to like manually call after the deadline, you know? And they gave me a number which actually worked out to be four percent, uh, five percent. So, um, yeah, it saves a lot of time there. Anything else, just, any follow-up questions there?
John, could you show them the interaction, like during the application process, how Tyler would use that as a way to message the people that are, have applied?
Yeah, let me go into something that I can play around in. So this is Townsville City and I'm gonna just pull up a building permit. This one looks good, Test Streets building permit, I guess. And so, um, all the approvals have been done, um, as we can see here. But any, any point during this process, if I'm, let's say I'm a building official and I need to review stuff and I have some questions, I can go over here to messaging and I can say, um, hey, uh, let's see, what are you doing for final grading and will it be done? You know, ask any kind of question. And you send this off, um, and the applicant, they get a, an email that has a link to their portal. So all they have to do is click on the link in the email that says, you just got a message, click here to read it in response. So they click the link, it takes them straight in. It looks like this one is awaiting fee payment, so that's front and center here. But if I look down here under messages, I can see this message and I can reply. A nonsensical answer, but I'm just gonna say yes. So, yeah, so, um, Tyler would, what he would do is he would go through the process and he would be marking off a kind of an approval, reviewing, denied, or whatever. He might use the messaging feature. He can also communicate here, so he can go over here and tag people. So I can tag Lexi back here. And tagging people just kinda allows you to notify your colleagues if you have questions or whatever on any kind of internal comments that you have. And another, some of the other stuff that he might do is, um, he would probably go and look at the plans. I don't know if this has any plans uploaded with it, but if there were, he can, he can look at the plans, um, he can make some adjustments. Civic Review will automatically calculate evaluations when it comes to building permits, so that it'll auto-calculate fees and everything for you as well. Is there anything else, um, that you, you were hoping to see, Anna Lisa, or hoping?
No, I think that's really helpful to see that, thank you.
All right, do you guys see any opportunities or value here? Maybe we talked a little bit about, I mean Tyler is, he's a building permit guy, but there are a lot of other uses. The idea is, uh, small organizations such as yours could use Civic Review for a, a lot of things within the county. You've got more bang for your buck that way, you know, so. Yeah, is there anything that you see that would be valuable about Civic Review to you guys?
Yeah, it looks awesome. I like that it's, uh, pretty inexpensive compared to lots of other software that people have presented to us. Something I like about it.
Cool. Yeah, and, and it, and it probably wouldn't increase, uh, for a long time because of the numbers that you guys have, you know? So, um, and what we would do is we would just try to encourage you guys to use it for you for as much as you can and like I said, get more bang for your buck there. And, you know, if you ever have questions with help and you can go over here and you can send us a message and chat with our, our team and get help pretty much instantly. Our, our recording feature on this little chat tool tells us that we respond within twenty seconds, so. Yeah, we're really quick to help out. All right, Anna Lisa, um, is there anything else? I'll, I think the, my time is up and I think I've said everything I could in a short time. Anything else we needed to discuss before I hop off?
No, thank you for being here and showing that. I, I did show them, uh, the commissioners a copy of your proposal and, uh, you know, the pricing tiers as based on, you know, the number of, um, uses that we use it for, so thank you.
Cool.
Thank you.
All right, well, yeah, thank you very much.
We'll definitely have some discussion about it, so thank you.
Okay, thanks for your time. Good luck with the rest of the meeting, guys.
Thank you. Okay, you said that's a pretty good price, huh?
Yeah, that's not bad for that, for the Civic.
The sanitation, use it?
Probably, no, probably doesn't integrate with the scale. So that's our part of sanitation, but it has to integrate with Polaris as well.
Okay.
Mitch. Morning commissioners, how are you doing?
Good.
Those look familiar.
Yeah.
They're getting a lot of, getting a lot of mileage out of those, right?
They've been around.
That's funny.
Okay, uh, first thing is we'll talk about the preliminary plat for Big Bear Estates.
Do I have that one? You have to accept it, right?
Yes, I emailed that to you. And Norm's here if you'd like to come up as well.
Yeah, come on, Norm.
Just wait till John gets back?
Uh, maybe, we'll, let's give him a, I mean, a.
Not a problem.
How you doing?
Good, Norm, how you doing? You been doing?
Not today, but sometimes it doesn't come, it's, sometimes it doesn't come out from the last time, you know?
Right.
This one is the Big Bear?
Correct.
Yes. What'd you come up with that name?
I don't like the name, when my partner came up with the name. I had, I, my name was something to do with Lakota and then he said, no, we don't like that, so.
Well, the big week, huh? We get through this week, what?
I try to stay home and avoid most of it, but, and then it's just fine, you know? The relatives come and stay with me and they go to, they go and they tell me how it is, you know?
I went on an ambulance run this past week. And the, I guess we had a big wind come up and then every, I assume everyone left Rendezvous and headed back.
That's what I heard, yeah.
And halfway up the lake, it was stopped, bumper to bumper, all the way around Gus's Point, past Sweetwater.
Is that what caused that?
I, that's what we guessed.
That's what someone else.
Cause Rendezvous was plum, 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 plum full. And then when the wind come up and it was empty.
I got, I got caught in it, I'm thinking, well, we must have a wreck up here somewhere. I mean, it's, and we just kept going and going and going and going and, and then kinda got into town and things started kinda dispersing, but, yeah, I mean, it was just, I thought.
Dell, Dell thinks that the pedestrian lights have a lot to do with it too cause a steady string of people and the cars just have to sit and wait for them and it's just, they're just.
Well, yeah, somebody mentioned that they thought that the problem was down, um, what did they say? Down by, uh, the one on the other side of the shale down there, that, that one, the crossing there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's where it was.
Cause, you know, they walk up and they hit the yellow lights.
But I drove in, I drove in oncoming all the way from like that second rest, uh, restroom, along the lake, all the way into Garden City.
Really? So they had to peel off onto the, the shoulders, that was saying?
I've never seen anything like that.
Yeah, it's been a while since, I mean, you, you know, I mean, if there's been an accident or something, yeah, but that's. Of course, that's just a typical, you know, you, if, if we're not used to waiting in line by now between Logan Canyon and between here and the junction and, and now Evanston started on the outside skirts of town. If you're going through Evanston, now they're gonna pave, I don't know how far they're doing, they're doing Mill and Phil out this way. So, you know, you hit it just right and.
Yeah.
Took me, it took me an hour and fifty-five minutes to come from Logan to Garden City last night.
Wow.
Yeah.
Because of the constru-, because of the construction?
Three stops?
Yeah, three stops.
Wow.
They were filled.
Yeah, you'd hope they'd do one section at a time, so there's only one stop.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, one of them's a flagman and another one's a light and the one light there, um, I, where is it? There's one light that has a, anyway, it tells them.
How many minutes?
Yeah, how many minutes? And you look up there and you're going, really?
Yeah.
And all that does is, you know, people get out and they go for a walk.
I set my alarm before I fall asleep.
Me too.
I, I've, I've sat there and fallen asleep pretty soon, someone's falling behind me. The flagman's up there, you know?
We, I went to one and, and I, I dozed a little bit and finally someone went and I thought, why aren't we all go? Finally, the guy right in front of me turned and went around and I went by and the guy was kicked back, slept fast asleep. Everybody just kinda went around him.
That could've been me.
All right, what did John go?
Yeah, he had to hit the restroom.
Guess we can get started. Okay. So I'm Mitch Pulson, I'm the Planning Administrator for Ridge County.
Nor, Nor Mekum, the developer of Big Bear Estates.
So Big Bear Estates was, uh, submitted some time ago. Uh, during the review process, the engineer, uh, noted that, uh, they lost about their four lakefront lots because of the a hundred-foot setback. It was decided between the developer, myself, and the engineer that, you know, rather than proceed forward and go to the Planning Commission, it made more sense to divert and go to the variance board, um, to see if we could get a variance or to see if they could get a variance, uh, for that hundred-foot setback. In May, the, uh, variance board, um, re, uh, you know, reviewed that request, they approved it. And so that paved the way for them to move forward with submitting their, uh, preliminary plat, which has been reviewed by the county engineer and found to be meeting the county, uh, ordinances in all material respects. What they're proposing is a six-lot subdivision just to the north of the Lakota, the existing Lakota subdivision. Uh, the lots are, you know, roughly, uh, just shy of an acre. Uh, they have will-serv letters that have been submitted from, uh, the, uh, the sewer district, the city of, uh, Garden City's, uh, water, uh, water system. They've got a access, um, ease, or an access approval, uh, by the Department of Transportation off of the highway. And during the public hearing, you know, a number of people showed up to oppose the project, uh, primarily from Lakota. From what I was gathering, they don't announce that. Uh, there seemed to be concern about, you know, wetland habitat, uh, wildlife habitat, access to the beach, encroachment onto neighboring properties and things like that. There was a recent court case, uh, in the Supreme Court that has scaled back. The Corps' engine, the Corps of Engineers' ability to regulate, uh, wetlands of what is considered a wetland, the developer has submitted, uh, all that, uh, wetland divi-, wetland delineation information to the Corps of Engineers and they have received a jurisdictional determination of what is and what is not. And our engineer has reviewed that and agrees with it. And the other issues that were brought up by the public are just simply things that we can't, um, uh, regulate as part of the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the, uh, preliminary plat for Big Bear Estates to the county commissioners with no additional conditions attached.
Okay, my only question is about mosquito habitat. Are you creating or disminis-, diminishing it?
I don't know, what do you want?
Well, Lakota is a hotspot for mosquitoes, so I, uh, you know, the less, I, I hate to say this, but, but the less wet area, the better.
Yeah.
Anyway.
We, we, uh, there are three major ponds on the property that were dug in the nineteen thirties for, um, Rainbow Rod and Gun Club, uh, rearing ponds. And the Corps gave us, uh, permission to fill in one of those. They, they determined that it was non-jurisdictional.
How are we accessing? Uh, this lot?
Right here?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
It comes through here.
Kind of a dog leg?
Yeah, which is currently, uh, part of the, uh, the wetland area. So this will have to be filled in through here to access this lot.
Okay.
The other question I would have, um, for sanitation, um, is there a, maybe there is, is there an area there, Norm, for a dumpster or two?
I don't think, I don't know if he put one in there or not. I don't, don't recall seeing one.
Okay.
But the right-of-way is, can't remember how wide, fifty feet?
Yes, the county right-of-way is fifty feet and you guys comply with that.
This one, this, this one here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's.
There should be, yeah, there should be an area on that that's, that's large enough to put a dumpster. You'd prefer dumpsters rather than cans, I would just go, and I do too.
Yeah.
I'm thinking we probably should modify, um, lot number one so that, uh, they don't have to drive down in.
That would be, that would be very helpful. That's a, that's something that if you could address that, um, that's, that needs to be addressed, so.
We, we can, where this is preliminary plat, we still have some work to do and some survey work to do. So I think that's a good suggestion and it, I think it should go just off the highway. Just on the south side of the e- entrance.
So just access this right, right in there?
Yes.
I think that's a good idea. I don't, I don't think it's good to access the, use that lot to access directly onto the highway and off.
No, no, we can't. We have to access here, but somewhere in the same area, I think we should put dumpster.
Right, right, no, I, I think that's a good idea. And that would be easy to carve out on either side, it looks like.
It would.
Okay.
If you include that, then, um, you know, or at least, yeah, if you would make a provision for that. So as we move through the process, it's not something that comes in late that, that, you know, you've got it in an early process. Based on the fact that the variance board has made a recommendation and moved it on to planning and zoning and they have their recommendation to approve, I'd make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for Big Bear Estates.
Okay, I'm second to that. Got a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, that question about mosquitoes, or anyone else has beat me up on, you know, wildlife habitat. I was wondering if you wanted more, wanted to preserve that habitat.
I, if, if there's gonna be some ponds out, we'll need to know about them so we can try and get them treated, but.
There's, there's two ponds down there, right?
Yes.
And that's, you know, as long.
They're both north of the entrance, it is.
Yeah.
There's actually three, but there were two, two will keep her north.
As long as we know about them, so we can get in and get some treatment in them early on, that will be helpful, so, anyway.
Thank you.
That, that's just kinda one of those, my phone rings, you know, about I saw mosquitoes and they're bad and I don't want them to. And, and Lakota is kind of a, it's one of those places where, um, they're not bad in town, but you get out to Lakota and those areas that have some wetlands around them, they, we get some hotspots and we.
Yeah, I've, I've seen very few at my house this year. I don't know if it's the heat or what. Yeah, I've, I've seen very few at my house this year, I don't know if it's the heat or what.
It's just great control.
I think it is. Uh, this, this area from here north is, um, conservation easement, so.
Yeah.
I don't, you probably can't, I don't know if you do anything.
We can, we can do some on the ground treatment there, so, we will when we'll try.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Alright, next.
Okay, next is, uh, the plat amendment, uh, for Blake Jackson.
Location.
This is in the, uh, North Eden subdivision?
Sorry.
Correct, this is, uh, so if you pull into the North Eden subdivision and head west. That road just kinda, kinda hooks and goes, uh, back south, and this is fairly close to, fairly close to the corner. Uh, and this is a pretty common occurrence, we're seeing this quite a bit anymore, and what these guys are requesting is that they acquire this property right here on the lakeside. As part of the, uh, survey, the state lines.
High water mark.
Exactly, and they just wanna combine that, so it's all under one legal description. And that's, that's, uh, that's the essence of their request, and that was.
Approve without any questions from the planning commission, okay?
So, are their neighbors gonna come in and ask as well, cause I imagine it, they could very well do, yeah.
They did our, did already and, cause they wondered if they have, had gained some, but. They weren't contacted, so probably not.
Some, some did, some didn't, that's just the way that, that whole thing works, so. I would make a motion that we approve the plat amendment for Blake Jackson.
Second. Okay, moving, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Okay, this is, uh, and this is almost after the fact now, uh, but it's almost more for your information at this point. So I've got this piece of property highlighted in blue right here, the red line is the Garden City, uh, city limits, that's what. What's in their jurisdiction, and so on my maps, we've never assigned that piece of property, um, any kind of zoning. Cause we thought that it was in the city, um, and somebody came to us and said, no, the, the city says it's in the county. And so I look at my map going, well, this boundary line I get from the AGRC, which is the auto, the, um.
Automatic A R F Reference Center.
Yep, exactly, uh, and so it's supposed to be accurate. Uh, and so I was, uh, you know, so we talked to the, the assessor's office, uh, and they said, no, no, that. Their taxes show that they are in the county, uh, so I visit with Mike, uh, Lenhart over lunch, uh, the other day, and he said. I, they're just going to go ahead, uh, and make a request to annex it into the city.
Okay, so where are we at?
Oh, I'm sorry, so this is the highway, this is Ideal Beach, this is Sweetwater Parkway, so the corner of Sweetwater Parkway and the highway.
Okay, so, the ann- yeah, the annexation was supposed to go down Sweetwater Parkway, but apparently it didn't.
Somehow it didn't, right. Or it wasn't, at least it wasn't reflected in the, in the, uh, in the shape file that I received from the, uh, the AGRC's office.
Okay, um, yeah, when, that was, that was the intention, I think, um. Well, no, it actually was not. Cause there was, um. This individual right here did not want to be in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that piece of property there, and so, um. That was, yeah. Okay, so they're gonna go ahead and do an annexation and just take it to Sweetwater Parkway.
That's correct.
Alright.
So, I was gonna, the original intent of this, uh, coming in was to request, what should we do with the zoning? Uh, but if the city's gonna annex it, we'll just sit on it and let them take care of that, and a- and it makes sense, right, they've already got. They've already got that commercial strip along the front anyway, so this, this is very commonsensish.
So what do we d- need to do to, anything?
Nothing at this point in time, it's just more informational, but, um, Garden City will just go through with the annex.
We don't have to okay that they can take some of our, annex some of our.
Well, they're just, we know they can annex whatever they want, I mean, we can't stop them. As much as some plans we'd like to.
I would as mayor and annexing, but I hadn't been on this end.
Yeah, so when they.
My office has to do a few things for them, but they'll, they'll send it to me if that.
Well, they'll have to have a public hearing, and they have to send out a notice to everybody that's being affected and that kinda stuff, but.
And what the zoning will be done.
As far as the city moving forward to annexing, um, that, we have no, I mean, we're just an information. We're, we're taking more, we're, you know, we're gonna move our property or our, uh, city boundary line, so.
Alright, okay, great, um, let's see, the next thing is we, uh, requesting direction on the. For the Economic Development Board to move forward, uh, you know, in the past, we have received.
Yep, come on up. State your names and.
Ladies first.
Nikki Weston, member at large, the Economic Development Board.
And our chair.
And the chair, and the chair lady.
And Sean Milne, Bear River Association of Governments, your de facto Economic Development Director.
Okay.
So, we had wanted to, uh, come, first of all, I think it's probably fair to say that we got the report in for fiscal year twenty-five. The state moved it up by a month this year, I wanna say thank you to those that contributed to it, and Annalisa, thank you very much for getting over some numbers and. Of course Mitch and Nikki as well, I really literally couldn't do it without the chairman signing the affidavit that just says, hey, you know, we're making our. End of year report. Uh, so with that being said, um, that has been submitted, it has been accepted, which are two different e- elements, they have to accept it on their end. Um, understanding that the report being filled out the way that I did, from the information provided. There's a lot of that money unspent, the state asks for, what is, uh, at basically three different categories, what? Has been spent and to whom and how much, pretty obvious, what is encumbered but not necessarily yet spent? And, uh, do you have anything that's unencumbered and unspent, they hate the third one. Um, it seems as though, uh, everything is encumbered for the purposes of the landfill still, and so. Uh, what I submitted on your behalf was that you don't have the permits yet fully in place, so you can't fully execute. And so, I mentioned that it was encumbered, but not yet spent. Uh, there are the allocations that you've made to the Bear River Regional Commission and Bear River Association of Governments, so Mitch and I respectively. Um, but now, before us is the question of what to do with fiscal year twenty-six. That application is due by month's end this month, and so I'll need to convene the CEO board and. The three of us, I think, are just looking for some general direction, even though the CEO board as, uh, is envisioned as to advise you. And you guys make that decision, we are looking for some guidance, so we're not out in left field if the ball's gonna be played into right, you know? And, um, time kind of being of the essence on a turnaround, we just want some good guidance, but I now turn it over to Mitch and Nikki as well.
Yeah, that was, uh, that's just the, the essence of the agenda item, is to give us a little bit of direction on how you'd like us to proceed. If we need to stand back a little bit again this year, or if you want us to reengage like we have in previous years. And offer, uh, micro grants to, uh, individual businesses, or if there's some other avenue you would like us to consider. So we can start implementing those things and, uh, get the CEO board together and, and bring them into the loop as well.
Mitch, go ahead.
Yeah.
Give me your thoughts on that.
I, I think this would be a fun time for the CEO board to convene, because we have no plans for that money. And so as far as with the CEO board, uh, I think it'd be an awesome chance to have a brainstorming session. If they wanna do it how they've done it in the past, that's great, but I would challenge them to look towards bigger projects or things that specifically drive. Uh, year-round business, or year-round employees, um, but as far as like what we've envisioned, I don't think. I don't think any of us have any clue, like, that's why we get the board is to.
Yeah, we have no, we have no, at least we have not discussed any projects, so we feel like that. Um, is a priority for us to move forward, so.
Like we did a year ago.
Yeah, well, you know, that, that was kind of an unexpected thing, um, but, anyway. Hopefully we're moving to a process of where we get those permits in place and.
So, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, they'll, because there's such a significant amount of the money still unspent, they will ask for an update within this year at some point, maybe. Two updates by again this point next year, if there's a significant amount that's still out there, which is reasonable, right? You'd want that if you had deferred to a board that was parked on, you know, fifty or a hundred, or in this case, a hundred and eighty thousand still, so.
But it'd be nice to update them with some of your, uh, conceived twenty twenty-six plans at the same.
Oh yeah, they're gonna be treated as two separate things, by the way, so, just, I'll continue to work with you and everyone here on what those expenses will be. Tie a bow around that, that'll just be its own little, you know, reporting, but yeah, um, twenty-six, Madam Chair, anything that you wanted to?
Uh, one thing that we do need to address, we need a new member, Jordan Perry has moved.
And Brian Carver has also moved on, uh, Mitch and I are ex officio. Um, both of us essentially acting as staff of the board and at your will and pleasure, of course.
Was Jordan Garden City's, is that what we put in for there, and Brian was just a, just a staff.
But really all, Mitch and I are also.
John mentioned earlier, of giving pri- a little pri- giving some priority to year-round businesses and stuff, and I. I wanna back up.
Well, it's from Nikki, um, I think that's a good idea, you know, as far as. We, we want people to be here, but maybe that's, it tells, you know, maybe we want, maybe the county ought to start looking for property it can purchase to, you know, for. Things down, but I don't know, uh, we just need a brainstorm, um, what, what you could do.
Along those lines, to give example from other places in the state, there have been those that have purchased land. There have been those that have not gotten in the land purchase business, so as not to take something off tax roll. But it may be fraught with its own political challenges, if you're picking and choosing winners and losers, so to speak, on where you put infrastructure. So this could be used as matching grant money for a municipality, say a municipality wants light industrial, retail, manufacturing, whatever it may be. And the county participates to say, to another taxing entity within the county's boundaries. You know, if you'd like to do that, then for every dollar, we'll give you fifty cents, or for every dollar, it's dollar for, wha- whatever, there's a lot of flexibility there. But there are places in the state where this money is being used for something in the dirt, horizontal infrastructure is what they might call it. Or land purchase, uh, or to be used, um. Kind of, kind of held to be used towards some development costs, um, so that it, you don't necessarily get in a tricky pinch. You never wanna waive impact fees, you don't wanna waive other kind of building inspection fees. Um, but you can have a pot of money that helps to compensate for the cost of those with chosen industries. If the county or the CEO board would like to be more specific about targeting particular industries and not necessarily other ones. You could say we're reserving a pot of money for specific ones, and then it would go to a bait. So they'd have to pay the fees that I just mentioned, but they could get it reimbursed. Cause you want to make sure you're always, if you have a fee, you wanna make sure everybody pays it, it makes it tricky if you start setting a precedent. For those that come in afterwards and like, well, how come you won't waive it for me? But if you make sure everybody pays, but in some particular cases, and you have a reason why, it's case by case. You say, well, here's a pot of money that can kind of compensate for that, anyway, there is a lot of flexibility to that point.
Okay, so we need a new member, um, how do you wanna go about replacing him? Do you guys wanna come forward with the, who, what do you wanna do on that?
In the past, we've asked Mayor Mike what he recommends, if he's got a recommendation, we can bring that to the board and, and then send that on to you.
Well, why would we just go with one mayor?
Um, I guess, I, that's just what we've done in the past.
Okay.
I don't remember enough of it, was he a political plaintiff?
Person as from Garden City, is that what you're meaning?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Jordan was up, well, like, their opinions, yeah, like, the city council person?
Yeah.
Uh, one thing to note, and I feel remiss if I didn't mention this, the state had required this last year of training. For CEO boards, which has been largely redundant, I can be kind of uptight about making sure I cover those bases, but. So, for in our case, it ended up being kind of a revisit, and, uh, Mr. James Dixon of Goio, uh, Sherry Stevens's direct boss. Provided this training for about an hour, in, in our particular, uh, region, so this is true beyond just Rich County CEO board. We have a member of the county commissioner council, in Cash County's case, a couple of them, that are on the CEO board. He has said that guidance from the top, not to be said as a regulation or law, but a guidance from the top is that no one from the deciding body. Not to be on it, there was significant pushback in box elders training about that, so, i- it was. Definitely clarified, it was more of a guidance or a preference or a suggestion, just letting you know that, whether it be someone. On a city council or mayor, they didn't really say, it was just whoever was going to be a deciding factor, which because this is a county grant. Would mean county commissions or council members or the county executive, but just also, the other two counties have not chosen to change. That format, so you guys just be aware of that. Um, well, not having another appointee doesn't hold us up for the work that needs to be done by month's end. Um, so, however you'd like, Madam Chair or Commissioner Mitch.
Remember who's on it, you, is it Nor?
We've got Cam Zerman. We've got Eric Walmsley, are the. The representatives, we've got Tammy Lindhardt is the tor- tourism representative, Troy Lamb from Workforce Services. Mark Alexander is a board alternative, BTC.
Who's, who's the voting members?
You have to have five.
Nikki, Jordan, Eric and Cam, Cam.
You have to have five, one from Workforce Services, uh, one from a municipality, county, what's that?
We probably need somebody from this side of the county, don't we? Wouldn't hurt. Like some, you know, agricultural, I guess that's you. Never mind, I take it back.
I mean, that was, that was.
Yeah.
You know, you want somebody over there with an agriculture background.
As soon as I said, I'm like, uh, that's it.
And if some remains, you've got ag as well.
Um, okay, well, let's, if you guys wanna make a recommendation on it. To Phil Jordan, you know, bring that to us, we'll be there, taken care of.
We'll figure it out.
Yep.
Okay, we'll send an email to you before month's end, just with, uh, maybe a recommendation and how. We would proceed, can I ask that you give some sort of CYA, uh, some email response that says. Yes or no to a recommendation and then formally vote on it and codify it in next month's meeting? Because it has to be due by the end of the month, I just wanna make sure I have something in, from the county commission to the advisory, okay, alright. Any other questions for us?
I don't think so, we just appreciate what you're doing and, and being willing to, uh, participate in this process. Nikki is a volunteer and, and, uh, you know, you guys are just kinda heading this up and stuff, and I appreciate you.
Okay, appreciate that, oh, go ahead.
I ask for some clarification.
I was gonna do the same.
To the, the structure, you're the bosses, how, how? How?
Okay, the clarification you're seeking is a little bit different than what I was about to ask, so I'll stop that, however, um. You're asking about bar- board structure and advisory?
Yes.
Okay.
How, how, how do the two of you work together with me, how, who, who's the boss?
I will take my direction from the county commission, that's who, that's who's my boss. I can tell you in the other counties.
The voting committee is the committee, and deciding, and that makes the decisions.
Okay.
Uh, these are our advisors and leg workers, and.
Keep us out of troubleers.
Okay.
So, in Sean's role, basically is to make sure that we're following the process correctly.
Okay.
And getting everything submitted and the board, he's kind of at your direction. To a certain degree, as long as we are okay with the direction you're going, let me just put it that way.
Okay.
Mitch, um, Mitch is involved with, as, as an overall, uh. What should I say, an overbo- uh, overall, uh, person of following and, and. Being part of that process of, of what, what direction you guys are heading and what possibilities are out there and. What, Mitch, what do you, how do you see your role other than that?
So I see, I see my role as in, in the, in the situation where we have these. So I see, I see my role as in in the, in the situation where we have these micro grants, I'm the one that. Uh offers, you know, I bring the applications in, I review it for consistency. I share that with the board as to what is complete and what's incomplete. Um and then once they make their their approvals, I keep a spreadsheet of all the, of all the finances, who got what and how much. Um and then I send all those applicants out a letter of you were approved, and this is how much, this is how you go about. Uh submitting your documentation, and I just keep the files on what's been submitted and the the disbursements and things like that and then. Provide that information to the, to the board, I'm typically the one that sets up the meetings. And we keep, uh we keep Sean in the loop um on the the board meetings as well.
You're the worker.
May I ask that I have the opportunity to set up the board meetings, for example, Annalisa, I had asked last week if I could be on the agenda, cause I was assuming that. So I do think that sometimes there can be some challenges to who's on first. But when it's come to the small business grants, Mitch has done an excellent job, and while I do that in the other counties I serve. I'm happy to acquiesce the tracking, personal engagement he has, relationships with folks that I do not. And I don't want to confuse other individuals and perhaps gray that area. But I, I do feel and wanna acknowledge since Sherry's on the call with us. I do feel a certain obligation to make sure that for the veracity of reporting and conversations I have with her. Her boss or her boss's bosses, that I can say that I know the frequency of meetings and be able to call those and. Establish those, just create a consistent paradigm, but uh with a more local touch, uh particularly when it's come to these business pass through grants, if that's okay. I don't feel like I need to micromanage and be in the midst of that.
I, I think that's important that um, you know, uh because you are. You are the one that has to to answer to Sherry and about, you know. Where, where we at in this process and what we, you know, is the money, is the money obligated, is it being spent? And this is the way it's being spent, so um I, I think so far it's working okay, is that right? Or, or all right with what we're doing?
This, I gotta give credit where credit's due too, and I've needed the data from Mitch, he provides it. And he's quick and and on top of it, and I really appreciate, this year obviously is a bit of a gap in that, but. Um I, I've appreciated how well he's tracked that and. And again, I just always wanna have that lack of anxiety when I'm talking to Sherry or her boss about where our money's at.
Yeah, and Mitch has a, a relationship with everyone, they know to go to him.
Yeah.
So you'll set up the meetings from here on out?
Yes, if, if that's consistent and if we can be in agreement with that, I'd feel good about that, so that I could make sure. The, the minutes, however, you have the access to your own public notice website, or Annalisa, do you, you're for the county. You're for the Bear Lake Commission, Regional Commission.
But we have to be able to submit stuff on behalf of Rich County as well, because we're the administrators over the planning and zoning.
But you do it, I notice, Annalisa, Madam Clerk, because I, I get the email you sent out for the agendas and the public notice. That I've signed up for. I want to be more consistent on sake of the county, can I pass that through you to post on behalf of the county's CEO Board? Okay, if, if not, fine, cause we have another mechanism that is very unique that box elder and cash don't also have. But it is usually the county's account for the public notice website those get posted from. So that, so that citizens for transparency sake know where they're getting it from.
I was gonna say it probably ought to come directly from the county's account, simply because the money is paid to the county and uh we are responsible.
And it's a county board, not a Bear Lake Regional Commission Board.
Not, not to.
Sherry, am I misspeaking at all, or is there any clarity or, or, I don't know, perspective you'd like to share? Not to make it awkward to call you out, but since you're with us.
You keep forgetting you're up there, Sherry, sorry.
And maybe she stepped away.
Yeah, I'm here and I'm, I'm just. To see the direction that the county decides to take, but what, do you have a question for me?
Just from what, what you've heard so far, do you have any disagreement or additional counsel to give?
So it sounds like you've just been talking about roles, like who's job. Right, and then direction on how to proceed forward this coming fiscal year. Um from the commission.
Yes.
I, I think you've basically covered that, um the role of the board is to meet regularly. To brainstorm ideas for the county and then present those recommendations to the commission. And then the commission decide which way to proceed, whether it's to follow recommendations of the board. Or if they have their own projects that they want in terms of economic development. And then yes, there's this about a hundred and eighty eight plus thousand dollars. Um I'm looking at it, just a report here, I, I don't know if that's encumbered or if it's rollover. And you're looking to do a different project with that. And the pass through grants are great unless the board comes up with some other ideas and recommendations for the commission to consider.
So Sherry, I marked all of.
Right, and that's a application, all applications are due September first. So decisions will need to be made quickly on what will go on Rich County's application for the coming fiscal year.
Sherry, I, I showed all of those as encumbered, there's a small payment to brag, the rest is. Being held for the landfill project that you're very well versed on.
Okay.
So they're all encumbered, none of them were marked as uh unused, unencumbered. Just because I think there's so much uncertainty until permits are approved.
Yeah, and that annual report has been approved by Goio, so and you're, so yeah, I don't, there aren't any conflicts that I have with what you're saying. Um but if there's anything else I can clarify, then let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Um for their recommendations and planning and thoughts, as those are presented to the commissioners for approval.
Okay, copy that, thank you, Commissioners, last question and perhaps we, um and and thank you very much for the clarity you've added thus far. You've mentioned larger scale projects. Is there any capacity for the small business grants that we've been referring to? Do you, not, not to fish too detailed here, since the advisory board needs to. Have the room and flexibility for its own honest recommendations to you, but. Would you, are you open for fiscal year twenty six to restore some of that pot towards pass through grants? Or is it all towards larger scale, in the ground kind of infrastructure things?
Oh, I think, I think for either way, I mean, I, you know, I, the, the grants I think have been very helpful, um. But one of the, like, one of the things um that's been mentioned already is, is um. What would those grants do for a particular business for? You know, uh for a year round.
Okay.
Situation, you know, and, and, and then I think that, you know, um. Based on um the value of, of the applications that come in, then. You know, um maybe a, a direction to something on the ground may. You know, maybe a mixture of both, I, I don't know that we wanna be tied into, I, in my mind, I think we need to look. At the very best bang for our buck, not only to stabilize our econom- economic. Economy within our county, both year round and 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 and. You know, uh seasonal, but also to try to look at some of these long term projects that would help, you know, promote. Um some, some future development, whether it's, uh whether it's property, you know. Um maybe it's towards, y- y- you know, uh a situation of where. You know, the county is looking, uh I mean, we're, we're kind of outgrowing ourselves here as well, I mean, that's one of the things that's. Kind of an issue for us is, is that, you know, the city owns quite a bit and, but we. You know, we've got our sanitation department and where we got trucks parked here and we got truck parked up at the. Road shed and we have trucks parked out of the landfill and, and, and so. You know, is there some o- opportunities to buy some property that we could even hold? For future development of, in some type of a, a business incentive to come in, I. I think, I think we need to look at anything outside of the box and in the box or in right now, in my mind.
Okay, Nikki, I hope it's okay, I'm gonna bring up our little sidebar conversation that we had, ju- just cause. It, it makes me wonder based on uh what Commissioner Cox just said. You, you'd mentioned earlier the challenges with pedestrians and the influx of folks in Garden City, perhaps. Specifically, since it is such the hub for the tourism. Do you, do you have any thoughts that you'd like uh Chairwoman Weston to be able to share with the rest of the board members about? Do you hope to disperse that? Do you want that out of a city center because it's too concentrated, do you wanna keep the country country? Is there some sort of. A knowledgeable line where you're like, well, you know, we really wanna kind of keep. That tourism economic activity one place and we don't really, we wanna really kind of keep it small somewhere else and maybe. It's only manufacturing or food processing somewhere else, just trying to get a better idea of how council could be provided to the whole. Committee so that they know what your big visions might be.
You know, during the summer, um you know, I mean, I, one of the things that you continue to look at, not. But you, you have, i- it's, it's becoming, you know, it's, it's just like a development, we just approved here. It's further to, to the north and we're seeing development and and opportunities uh for. Uh other businesses further to the south, and so I think the dispersment's actually gonna come on its own naturally. Um you know, as you see, you know, you wanna eat during the summer, you know, on a, on a weekend, you know, I mean, those businesses are. Literally overwhelmed on a weekend, you know, people are waiting in line and there's not, you know, and when you get in there. Um you know, it's, it's a matter of where do I park and, and you know, how long do I have to wait and. So the bike path issue and the walking path issues, kinda dispersing things, I think on the west side of the. Of, of Garden City itself is cause people are accessing that, I've noticed the, the new bike path on, on Paradise Parkway, how many people? You know, will walk that bike path from some of the nightly rentals up in, in Snow Meadows and also uh up in Buttercup. They can walk down and they walk down and they'll get something to eat and then they walk back, and so that's the dispersing some of those things. But I think you're gonna see businesses um come up along that Paradise Parkway as well. Um you know, there was a, a plan that was just put together, you know, that Utah State. Um showed, uh you know, what, what's the long range, long range plan and a lot of that was concentrated right in Garden City. I don't know that that's something that we wanna control one way or the other. Um I think what we need to do is provide opportunities for people to um. To be able to exist wherever they decide to uh uh put their business, you know, I mean, if we can help them. Establish a business, I mean, you, you see, uh you know, um. We're seeing stuff out by Ideal Beach and, and Blue Water and out that way, um there used to be a little store out there, it's not there anymore. Um I think in the next near future, you're gonna see some things come up out there, that property's selling. Um and for, for different, you know, types of purposes, but. I, I, I don't know, I, you know, in my mind, I, I think it's gonna disperse itself, but right now it's. It's, you know, certainly right in the center of Garden City, but. I don't know that even answers your question, I, I don't, I don't know what's the best thing.
What I thought, I, I, I gives the guidance in, in a way I was thinking, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I know we've uh.
I don't want, I don't think we wanna push people out of Garden City, but I think we need to be able to provide some opportunities for those who. But you know, um wanna stay out. Yeah, you know, rural, not maybe rural, but not, not in the concentrated, you know, congestion of Garden City. Cause it's, it's just not gonna get any better, you know, I mean, it's, um even, even with the new road they're putting in. That's not gonna alleviate an, an awful lot, um people are still gonna concentrate on the center of town because that's where. The particularly the eating establishments are and, and the, and the shopping centers, but. I don't think, I'll bet you within three or four years, you'll see a gas station out on the south end. With maybe a convenience store, very similar to what's downtown, because of the fact of, you know, for right now, um. You know, if you've got a boat and, and you don't want to go north. You know, it's a real hassle to get any type of uh into a, a, a place and get gas and everything else. Unless you go, you know, to one of the four, three service stations right downtown and if you're pulling these great big boats, which. You know, that seems to be the big thing now, bigger and better, you know, and it, it's, it's a real challenge and. And these people who are do- doing developments, um they've gotta, you know, they've gotta understand that, that they've gotta provide. You know, uh parking for a, a, a truck and a boat, I mean, everybody wants to jam these. These developments in and have, you know, two parking spaces and, and you gotta be parked right up against the garage door, but. That's not who's coming, it's, it's these people who are bringing boats and four wheeler, uh you know, RV trailers and. And those type of things, and I think we'll see that move out, where there's more ground and, and developments can. You know, the developments are gonna get more accommodating for this new style of, of recreating, I think. You know, I mean, it's amazing to me, the guy, talked to a guy yesterday and he was right there in Garden City and, and there was. Um they had rented, they, some nightly rentals there, and that particular developer has uh, uh thirteen spaces that. You can continue to hook onto your boat and back in, the spaces are long enough, and all thirteen of those were right full of. Of boats and, and, and pickups, and he said, that's the reason we're here, is because we have parking for, we don't have to unhook our boat, have parking. Right here, it's accommodating for us and we even have, you know, there's enough stalls for an, uh, or an, another car with a nightly rental. And he said, he pointed to his pickup and he said, that's three hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars right there between his boat and his pickup.
Three hundred. This is just a very different lifestyle than mine, I can't imagine that, but okay.
Two hundred and, two hundred and twenty six thousand for the boat.
Wow, so not my lifestyle, I just.
I says, use it every weekend? Uh, we try. Yeah, I mean, but I, you know, there's, there's just such this, you know, and then we've got lo- our local businesses who are. Uh you know, some of them are really thriving and some of them, you know, can use some help and, and uh what can we do for help? Can we help them expand, I know, y- you know, can we help them, uh you know, bring on more, more employees that. For year round and, and you know, what, I think those are all things that we've, we've, you know, as a board, we've gotta look at and. And maybe the focus is gonna be different, um from year to year, or maybe there, we need to have a long term focus that we're. Continuing to look at, you know, four, five, six, seven years down the road, so we're prepared to help. You know, in, in some manner, uh for some development, you know, particularly for some year round development, I think. I think that's kind of the direction we, we really need to see if we wanna help people. I've been long talking, sorry.
Thank you though, I appreciate it, I think we all really appreciate on this side.
Yes.
That'll help us in our conversations with the committee members.
Nope, that's great, it's all good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Can I take just a couple of seconds for items not on the agenda? We got the U- Utah Office of Outdoor Recreation Grant extended for another year, it was supposed to be done by September twenty fifth, we extended it for another year.
Thanks Nikki.
And Carmen Madsen has requested to be off the variance board for about five years.
So we need a new variance board member.
Yep.
And remind me who's on the.
On the variance board, so it's Bob Peterson, Nate Perry, Carmen Madsen, Heath Weston. Ryan House. Ryan House.
Ryan's on the variance and Puddy is on it?
Yeah, that's the, that's the protocol, the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board also serves as the Chairman of the variance board.
Okay.
I've had two people request to be on boards, Dave Oram has requested to, to participate and, uh. State Tracy Horsley would like to be on the variance board. So, that's all I got.
Okay.
Commissioners, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep, see you guys.
Alrighty. Everyone have a chance to look at the expenditures?
Um, I did.
I think you did too, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say it with more conviction though, yeah, I did. Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditures for June.
Second.
Move and second, the expenditures be approved for June, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Action carries.
I didn't, but he did.
I, I did, I read to him, I thought they were. They were, they turned out good, com- for our technical difficulty, so.
Yeah, good job by Annalisa.
Thanks, John.
Can I ask you a real quick question before you move ahead to. Are you going to head somewhere? That I, that I can meet you?
So the sheriff asked to have a little more time, so we should break for a break before we come back and be with them for example.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, we.
It's just gonna be casual and where you wanted to go, we'll be there ahead of time.
Okay, we'll go across the street.
Favor.
Yeah.
Yep, we should be there pretty quick.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a motion for minutes.
Didn't, I didn't hear.
Uh, so move, approve the minutes for July.
Second.
Move and second, minutes be approved, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Sanitation ordinance amendment.
That, we've already talked about that, that's what we talked about with.
Ben.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-three financial audit report.
Okay, so, uh, I'm, we all, they, the auditor issued this report, um. I think more about timeliness, um. I, I will, uh, reach out to the auditor, I would like them to come up and present their report. But, um, it's been issued to us, I don't know, I hope you all have had a chance to. To, uh, go through the audit, there's some things we need to address, um. But at this point in time, I would recommend that we go ahead and approve the financial audit. Um, to move on with our process of getting our funds released and then. Um, as we're working through the, the, uh, twenty twenty-four audit. Um, we're gonna have to have a little more dialogue. The problem is, is some of the findings that were in the twenty twenty-three audit are gonna show up in the twenty twenty-four audit. For the simple reason that, um. We were, we, we didn't know about the findings they had to modify for a twenty-four audit, so. They very, very possibly could show up in our twenty twenty-four audit as well. Because we didn't know to correct them.
Yeah, but we can fix them this year.
We can, we can, we can, so I would make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-three audit. Um, that's been presented to us by. What's the audit firm?
Uh, Stuart.
Uh, Stuart and Annie and.
Ron Stewart is the.
Okay. Anyway, I would make that motion.
Okay, second. Move and second that, uh. Twenty twenty-three financial ought to be approved, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, we will break for lunch.
Well, seeing as it's executive session when we come back, I'm just gonna end the stream for, just letting the public know.